My name is Scott Bugbee. To my right is Jim Leehan. To my left is Jeff Palumbo. To Jeff's left is our town administrator, Jack Hathaway. And to Jack's left is Marion Harrington, our executive assistant. I want to advise everyone in the crowd tonight that this meeting is audio and videotaped.
Dave?
Dave? Thank you for coming.
We know him by name.
We know him by name, so far, I can see through the crowd. Jack, could you read us the agenda?
I'd be happy to. We're actually going to skip the first item, which was a health insurance discussion. Reschedule that for two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
Or two weeks from our next meeting.
Thank you.
We have action items, including consider voting, accepting the conservation restriction from Mass Audubon Society. Please consider allowing ride for food permission to use Norfolk roads for their fourth annual bicycle ride for food. Please consider appointing a sesquin- sesquincentennial committee to plan a celebration, Norfolk turning 150 years old in the year 2020. That's a request from the Historical Commission. Discussion items, including review of the warrant, review of the budget, Town Hill Memorial. And actually, we do not have an executive session tonight. I'm cutting this short, trying to get you home early.
Okay. Great, thanks, Jeff. Okay, so we don't have seven o'clock, Scott. So, first one is the conservation restriction, which Marion included that information in our packet. Did you guys have any questions?
No.
Jeffrey?
No.
Do we know, Jack, just on the part about the Audubon obtaining the 96, did that have a contingent of Mass Audubon obtaining some additional funding?
Funding?
Yeah.
I believe they did, otherwise it wouldn't have gone forward.
Okay.
And the Conservation Commission signed this the other night.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, perfect. And we have the ride for food to use Norfolk roads. So I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay. I wonder if I can say that big word, Jack, of the 150-year celebration?
I said it once, that's all I can do.
Yes, that was well said. So, we can...
Yep. We had, prior to my time, but we did have Marion, as a very young child, may remember the 1970 celebration, and then there was a 1995 celebration for 125 years.
You were in a carriage, weren't you?
Yes.
I'm never going to make that mistake again, Marion. Never.
Jim might be in a carriage by the time the 150 comes around. There we go, we'll see.
There'll be an ambulance on.
Yeah, exactly.
So, Historical Commission, I think, would like, obviously, to participate, and I'm sure they can provide us a lot of information on forming the committee, but they would like you to form the committee. And my guess is many of them would like to participate, so.
Okay. So, do we need a motion to...
Just a point of clarification, when we did this for the...
Okay.
Just be sure we do it right here. When we did this for the Town Hill celebration, for the 2011...
Yep.
We were more specific in appointing, we had the number of people on the committee. Do we need to do that?
I think that this would just get you going, and then you could...
I mean, I don't have a...
Want to chair it?
I don't have a bias, that's not my point. I just want to be sure we do it right. I just remember we did that on the 2011, we were specific. Do we have, we don't need to be specific?
You don't need to be specific. I think you, I think something like this, a social event, you're probably going to want to leave it open-ended because...
So, then people just submit their names, and then we vote the committee? Is that the process, or...
Yeah, and you may want to pick a chairman.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Not tonight, but yeah.
Okay, all right. I will move to establish a sesquincenti... Yeah, okay.
Sesquincentennial.
Thank you.
We practiced.
Committee. You've practiced that word several times, I can tell, to plan on the 150-year celebration.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Get your names in, folks. Okay. I was using the action items. Jack, do we want to do the...
Well, we need to number the warrant. I don't know if Mr. Benton, chairman of the advisory committee, may want to join us, just because we'll probably want to pepper him with questions as to how they're doing.
Well, they did it A, B, C, D, E, F, G last time I looked, didn't you?
Well, that's what Marion has adopted, that practice.
Do you have fresh versions for us? Okay.
I do.
Hi, David.
Well, I think we fixed that, I hope. Yeah, we had three Os, I think you're right.
Thank you very much. I'll go look for the old one.
I have a 331 one, if that's still...
Eleven numbered articles, and then alphabetical articles.
Yeah, and the numbered ones don't have to stay in that order, that's just, those are just kind of the boilerplate ones that we all start with. Jim, you didn't talk about the zoning ones that... Oh, I think the zoning board, I think the planning board's going to talk about them. You didn't talk about them today, did you?
We did not, no.
So, are we good with keeping the first 10 as is?
First 11.
Sorry, first 11?
Yeah, they're fine by me, they're pretty much all boilerplate.
Issues with that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we should group them. I mean, the community preservation should stay together.
Right.
I mean, A and B are boilerplate, too.
The only thing potentially you could consider is, I'm sure Dr. Zelensky will be here for the budget presentation, and we have a couple of KP-related articles, so we could move those shortly after, unless, you know, unless we want to keep them near the end, just to...
You're talking about H?
We've got, I think there's three, HQ and R. Let's see, Q...
Page 14.
What's that?
Page 14.
Okay. And page nine, too. That's the first one, that's Article H, so you want to do...
Couple of Hs, yeah.
So, we do, so A and B, then are going to be those, Article A and B will be 12 and 13, is that okay?
Right.
And you're saying, Dave, you think Dr. Liz...
Dr. Liz will be here for the...
She'll be here for the budget.
Yes, and so, in case a question came up, especially on Q and R, although they should be relatively straightforward.
So, you want to make H number 14?
Q is 15. Right? Are there two Hs?
No, it just has an H in it, like that's, I think, because that goes to the drawing. Not like, you know what I mean, it's not an H.
Oh, I see, okay.
So then, Article H is 14, then on page 14...
And R.
Article Q, Q is 15, right?
Mm-hmm.
And R is 16, okay?
Uh, no, no. 14, 15.
We have on page nine...
H.
H is 14, page nine.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
It's okay. That's 14.
Apologies, you're right.
It's okay.
R is 16.
R is 16, yep, okay. So now we're back to, okay...
Do CPC next?
Yeah, I think so, too, so that's...
So, 17, 18, 19?
17, 18...
I think there's a 19.
And 19, which is arguably...
And a 20.
And a 20, okay.
Now, I have a question about G.
G, okay, yeah.
Well, the Planning Board is having its public hearing on G tomorrow. And there is, there is some consensus, from what I'm being told, Jeff, that there are issues with this the way it is. And at least I've heard from two members that they think that they will recommend IP-ing this. My question to this board is, and I agree with that, by the way, I think this is not written, it's a good first draft, but it needs to be tweaked. And what I'm concerned about is, I do not want to see us start amending these bylaws on Town Floor.
Right.
And so, even if it's IPed, there could be people that have their own agendas around this, which is fine, and amended it, you know, to overrule the IP, and we might find ourselves back in that same situation. So, I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense, if the Planning Board so recommends, and I, what I'm gathering, this might be an outcome. Can't say it because you haven't decided, but it might be an outcome. And I know in the discussions I've had with Ray, he agrees that there's some tweaking that needs to be done in this. I would almost prefer to take it off the warrant. Just take it off, and let's work on it with the right people, and get it in the right format that it should be in, and bring it back the right way. And not run the risk of getting into, you know, a situation where we might have something go through on Town Floor with all sorts of amendments that happened to us last time that we pay a price for. Just a thought.
Yeah, well, I think we all realize that zoning is complicated, and it's, I think, even a bit more complicated because of our bylaws, which I think could use some updating and improvement. So, I certainly wouldn't disagree with that, and I think your suggestion, the fact that it's the Town Planner who would be requesting, if you will, that it be removed...
Yep.
I don't know what the precedent is, you know, at this late stage to do that, but given that he is the requestor, then I would think that, you know, if I'm looking at this from the outside, that that seems to be...
Shut this off.
You know, fair, objective way of handling it.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, I was laughing at myself.
Yeah, I think...
You know what I'm saying?
No, no, I agree. I mean, after tomorrow night, if that's a consensus, I mean, we can, you know, we could, maybe could we check, would it be appropriate that we, we could do a vote to remove it from the, we could open the warrant, vote to remove it pending the recommendation of the Town Planner?
With claim.
Could we do that? I mean, if the Town Planner recommends removal from the warrant, we would so allow that, so to speak. I just, I, we learned a lesson last time in spring meeting, you know, I mean, several of us voted for a particular article, myself included, and didn't see the linkage to another article that created a problem. And it's happened several times now, and I just, if we don't like it, and we don't think it's right, we've now got someone who's responsible for helping us work on this, which we didn't have before, the Town Planner, and, and working with the Planning Board, let's get it right, where we can all stand up and be comfortable to recommend it to the Town.
I mean, I would argue that it might be a more prudent course of action to do as you say, but pending the decision of the Planning Board. I mean, Ray's not a resident of the Town, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. I'm saying one in the same. If the Planning Board recommends it, then the Planner issues everything. Yes, I agree. That's what I was meant to say, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I assumed it would all be contingent on the direction of the Planning Board.
Yeah, so I would, you know, I would support something like that, and I would think that the Planning Board members would feel...
I just think that makes a whole lot more sense. Why engage in a debate on Town Floor with, with an article that we know is flawed?
Okay.
So, we're not going to remove, now you're going to go through with your Planning Board public hearing tomorrow anyways?
I believe so.
They should, sure.
You know, there's a certain period of time in order to ensure that the advertising and such takes place soon enough, so, I actually, I think I received the agenda, maybe even today, and I haven't had a chance to check the emails today, I've been meeting all day, but, I mean, Jim, is, are you, are you sure that it's on the agenda for tomorrow night?
It is, it is on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that makes sense, that if you guys decide it isn't right, and that seems to be the direction, then my opinion is, let's, let's take it off. And, I mean, we could always post a meeting and do it again on Thursday.
Okay.
You around on Thursday?
At, in the evening, yeah.
I mean, we could do that, couldn't we? Oh, no, I won't be, I'll be in New York.
When are we meeting, on Wednesday?
Well, we still have a little time, right? Before the warrant's printed.
Oh, yes, well, not that much time.
But Monday, we could...
Oh, yeah, time like that, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could just have a brief, five-minute meeting to open the warrant and remove it and close it.
We're meeting Wednesday, though.
Meeting Wednesday.
Jeff, did you read, Jeff, no? Yeah, that's something I'm just hearing about.
Oh, this one, oh, are we posted for this Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's fine, I probably can't be there, I have some visitors for, for work that I'm responsible for this week.
This is Wednesday.
International visitors.
Would you be okay with it?
Yeah, oh, that's fine.
So, you'd be okay with it if we voted that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then, okay, then we've solved the problem.
We have to stop you tomorrow.
So, we'll wait for you guys to kick the bucket.
So, we'll put a number on that, okay, moving on.
Dave, you okay, I mean, you see where we're going with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, I think, yeah, I don't see any issue with it. I mean, it seems like Ray's purpose was to provide some options.
Right.
And so, if the consensus is, we need to...
It's a great start. I think the issues are around, I think the issues are around the B1 district, the core district, is the, is the concern.
Right, exactly.
And, and I think they're, they're correct, you know, they're, so flush it out.
Okay.
So, we'll hold off until...
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, when you finish that, you're done with that one?
Yep.
I discovered a little N-O-N-P are the capital articles. We need to sneak down there.
What is it, is it N-O-N-P?
Page 13.
Right. So, they should be moved up.
And I think we would want to have it be eight. We'll do it right after the two enterprise fund budgets.
Do we have to renumber everything now?
I think we were going to put A, B, C.
So, what do you ask, Jack, so after eight, right, you said? No?
So, N becomes eight?
Right, N is eight.
O is nine.
O is nine.
P is 10, so everything else moves back three, right?
So, eight becomes...
Eight is 11.
Yep.
Nine becomes 12, 10 becomes 13, 11 becomes 14. Right, yes.
Yep. 15 is 16.
Nine is 12.
And we got to go over to...
What about page five, the 17, does that become 20, right? Can we just do it that way?
Yeah, that becomes 20, yeah.
From one page to page five, right? So, make sure I'm going to say, 21, then, right?
21, yeah.
Page five. So, on page six, 22, Article D, right?
Yep.
22, 23. Possibly removing that one, right?
14 becomes 17.
17, on page, we're on page nine now.
Right.
17.
And...
Now, page, now...
15, yeah, the last page.
15 becomes 18, right?
16 becomes 19.
19.
19, okay.
That wasn't so bad.
We think.
Till we find out we have four numbered Hs. So, where are we at, 17, is that the last one we got? No.
We're at 20, I think.
20, 23?
We're at 20, what are we at now, Jeff?
Like, 23, you're on the last one.
I have 21, I think, on page five. Oh, 23, we're at 23, right?
Just start from, you know, just flip through, see if we all have the same...
Yep.
The first page is one through three.
Yep, perfect.
And then four, five, six, seven, 11.
Yep.
12, 13.
Yep.
14, 15, 16, 20, 21.
Yep.
22, 23.
Yep.
That one, G, will, is not numbered yet, again.
Right.
17 is H.
Yep.
I is not numbered, J, K, L, M. On page 13, we have 8, 9, 10, 18, 19.
Perfect. So, we just got one page.
I think we had a 23 was the highest number.
Yes, 23, yeah.
So, just...
It's just page 10.
Move on down.
We're just going to do page 10? Since the only page is on there?
So, 24, 25, 26?
Right, so, Article I, we're going to make 24, everybody okay with that? Page 10, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, 24, then getting rid of the capital committee is 25? All right?
Yep.
Okay, and 26 for the petition?
Yep. And L and M?
L, L, I is 20, what have we got, 27?
28.
So, we're leaving Bob's, what was his last name, 28, okay.
I can't remember a spring meeting, well, we only had 28 articles.
Is M 28?
M is 28, yep, and that should wrap it up, right?
So, G would be 29 if we, if we do keep it?
I don't know if we'd put that, well, would that be last? I don't know. Right? I don't think we're going to leave it at the last, but we'll see what they talk about.
I'll run this by Jonathan, make sure it's okay.
Okay.
Oh, we're posted at six.
Yeah.
That's right, I'm sorry, okay. For the grievance.
Okay, so, the draft warrant, all right. Go and talk about the good news, bad news, Jack? The budget's all balanced?
I'd love to. Oh, did you balance the budget? Did not. For the last two weeks?
Just trying to throw that in there for you, Jack.
Some options.
Okay.
And I will say, Mr. Benton was kind enough to work on it himself, too, so he's, he's given me some ideas. Green visor, you had the green visor on?
Yeah. Oh, God. Should I get comfortable, something like that, or?
Business, no.
Tie, Jeff?
Should I dress down?
Listen to the tie, here we go, nice, nice. That was seen by everybody.
All right, so I give PowerPoint presentation, just for fun. Some of it you've seen, and here's a...
We don't have this, do we have to look up there?
Yeah, you can have them, if you want, you can look on, no, Scott.
Yes?
That's the, well, that's, that's the presentation, so if you don't want to look at the screen, you can just...
Okay, there you go. Okay, yes, go ahead, Jack.
Yep.
All right, so, as a reminder, we talked about this a little bit, free cash was certified last July, $1,109,475. That's really in two components, $453,000 of prison mitigation, and $655,000 for general purposes, or kind of traditional free cash. It is all free cash, but that's just for our own purposes, we're breaking it up. Capital free cash, we had a starting balance, $453,000, and spent $50,500 at the Fall Town meeting on a couple of capital projects, so we have $403,459 available. Just interrupt me at any time if you, if I start going too fast. The other free cash, or if you have a question, yeah, how about that? Starting balance of $655,516. At Fall Town meeting, we appropriated $216,050, so we have available $439,466, $350,000 of which I've already identified for the, for the budget for FY16. So, we, if we follow that route, we'll have $89,466 remaining. Some of the revenue components of the budget, this is the, this is, sorry, this is state aid based on the governor's budget. We are expecting the House budget to come out any, any day now, but, and I don't suspect it to change a lot, but it could. So, school aid is up $16,000. Charter school aid, just because of that, that's the money that comes and goes based on the number of students we have for, in charter schools. That is up $7,000. Lottery funding, that's, that's the, well, it's not really called lottery funding anymore, but that's the general government aid, is up a little less than, a little more than $30,000. Some of the exemptions for veterans and other folks that, that we give, we give them exceptions on their property taxes, and then we reimburse that by the aid on a, on a, on a one-year lag, so that's up a little bit. That's really just recouping money that we've, we've allocated out on our own. Pilot money for state land, that's the state-owned land, that's pilot payment in lieu of taxes. It's all calculated, the state appraises the property, sets the theoretical tax rate that they're going to pay on that assessment, and we get $154,000. That was well over $200,000 about six years ago. We got crushed when they revalued the property. And I've asked our new chief assessor to see if she can get involved in that a little bit, but really, we don't have a lot of control. And then the assessments, mostly the county assessments, you can see going from $409,000 up to $443,000, that's MBTA assessments, county registry. So, we have a, an increase of about, a net increase of about $22,000 or 0.56%. Not a, not a great year for state aid, so far, anyway. Hopefully, the House and Senate will help us out a little bit. My font is a little small on this one, so I apologize, but it's just a snow and ice recap, and this is FY15, so this is in the current budget, but it's one of our problems that we'll, we'll see later in the, in the show here. FY15 appropriation, we appropriated $175,000. We have spent $625,285. Much of that beginning in late January, starting with the four back-to-back storms that occurred. So, we have a deficit of $450,285. We've applied for a FEMA reimbursement, working with the state, and we've applied for approximately $382,000 of aid, well, that's what we're saying, where our expenses related to storms. So, we would, if funding is approved, we will get 75% of that back, or $286,500, leaving us with a deficit of $163,785. This is an unusual FEMA request, and this is, this is being driven by the state, not by us, but we certainly agree with it. The, usually the storms are, they have like a 24 to 36-hour duration, this, this Governor Baker has made a special request to have the, the whole period of those four storms considered a FEMA reimbursement, just because of the piling on, if you will, of the, of the storm, and it just really, for the DPW, never, the storm never really ended, they never, you know, they never got to the point where they fully cleaned up, and then by the time they get on to the next storm. Excuse me, Jack, and could you explain the 75% again? Is that an assumption in terms of the funding versus... If they, if they approve it, that's what, you know, unless they, unless they change the rules, which is possible, but, but whenever we apply for FEMA funding, we get 75% reimbursement on, on our expenses, so... Oh, okay, okay. So, if you take the deficit of $450,000 and apply the, the 75% reimbursement of $286, that's how you get to the $163,000, would be our new deficit. that's how you get to the hundred and sixty-three thousand, would be our new deficit.
Good, thank you.
Jack, do they, you know, and they, when you do the request, obviously, do they ever come back and change that, or, you know, before they apply the seventy-five percent, they say, no, you know, you're only eligible for three hundred thousand, and then seventy-five percent of that? Or was that a pretty good number?
No, it's a pretty good number, because they, because the, we'll go through it. Couple of our, um, the department heads, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Bob, uh, DPW Director, and then kind of Karen Mitnick, along with Bob, uh, sorry, Ed Nolan, um, is our FEMA...
Yep.
Our emergency management director. They all, uh, work on it, and they have FEMA representatives that they, they work with while they're...
So it's a pretty, okay.
It's a pretty straightforward calculation, um, and, you know, we have to back it up with receipts and payrolls, et cetera.
Okay.
So if we take a step back, I guess, a little bit, um, and look at overall revenues, and these are in the thousands. Our tax base, so that's property taxes and personal property taxes, projected to go from twenty-four point seven million up to twenty, just over twenty-six million. And that's pretty, there's no real guess there, that's, you know, you just, you add two and a half percent. The, the guessing part would be what is new growth, and I, you know, I come up with a number. I have some discussions with Bob Bullock, um, this year with our new chief assessor. I've asked Lorraine to look at, uh, the number, and, and before I gave her my number, I asked her to come up with a number, and she came up within the, within the ballpark. So we have about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars estimated for new growth this year. It's funny, I, just to meander a little bit for a second, I think we're, we're a little bit in a, uh, a, a... I get a little concerned, I think we have a little bit of a potential dip, just between Village of Rivers Edge finishing up, you know, I think we're going to get the last bit of that, but that, that subdivision has really saved us the last three, or four, or five years, with all the growth going on there, kind of replaced everything else that was going on in town, that, that stopped. I think we've got a lot of stuff teed up, um, both in fortyBs and then some subdivisions that are still getting going. The Pulte one is going, so that's, that's helping us out, but I, I'm a little concerned that we're going to see a little bit of a fall back before we, before, I think we'll hit all-new highs, probably two years from now, assuming that some of these, especially the fortyBs get going like we think what they're going to go. Uh, local receipts, um, I, I nudged those up, uh, in some cases from the last time we talked. Uh, I bumped motor vehicle excise tax up a little bit, some of the permits, um... Brought a couple down, but those were, those are really the smaller ones, so local receipts, we, I think we'll gain about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from year over year. State aid, we already talked about. And then available sources, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for FY sixteen is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash, and then twenty-five thousand dollars of the cemetery funds, um, that we take on an annual basis. So a total, uh, we're seeing about one point six, almost one point seven million dollars of new revenue year over year. The next slide is a new one for, um, at least the, uh, breaking out the information. I, I took the major expense components, um, and it just strictly driven by the size of the budget, um, and just showed, showed you those, um, and really it's for, for mine and anybody's purpose who wants to start attacking, trying to resolve this is, you know, obviously you, you... Obviously, the big-dollar budgets are the places that you want to generally focus on first. Traditionally, anyway. So Norfolk Elementary going from four, ten point four to ten point eight million, uh, four point three percent increase. King Philip, as it stands today, going from seven point three to seven point eight million, uh, increase of six point eight-four percent. Police at two point two, up to two point three, five point eight percent increase, uh, et cetera. Health insurance now is the fourth biggest budget, uh, in the town, going from one point nine million up to two point one. An increase of ten point eight-six percent as it stands today.
Jack, question on that?
Yep.
I know that, uh, Scott had discussed some alternatives to that, and that he was meeting with the union, and that those alternatives, I think it was about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar savings, uh, which about two-thirds of it would be ours. Uh, and then there's a sharing component, but somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollar savings, potentially to us on our budget, has that gone anywhere? I know we met with the union, I don't know the results.
They're still going back to their unions, um, the feedback has not been positive to the... So far, if the unions want to keep the, they don't want to make changes to the...
But we can force the issue now.
We can if we go, yep, if we go to that, that process that, uh, Scott laid out, yeah. The GIC, yeah, the, the, uh... There's a term, standard plan.
The proposal was basically, while some changes were made, we would fund the difference, which kept them neutral. So what's the issue?
Well... Round subject, I, I'm a little hesitant, um...
You can speak.
Couple of issues are the, uh, um...
Is this something that has to stay within the confines of the discussion at this point?
Well, I, I, no, I can, I mean, I can give you, let me, let me give you a little bit, and then see where we end up. I think the, the, one of the bigger concerns is, is talking, when we talk about, um, adding co-pays, and then, but the town setting up a fund to, to pay for those, there was a lot of concern of, of, the feedback that I got was that, uh, there was concern over the people having to turn in receipts, healthcare receipts into the accounting department, and those becoming public records and people's health insurance. So there's a, there's a process concern that they have. We've said that Franklin did the exact, kind of the exact same process, and they, you know...
I think there's a way we can keep that private.
Yeah, I, I think so, too. But the bigger concern was, you know, we kind of talked about a two-year, setting up a two-year funding of those fees, and they very shrewdly said, well, what happens after two years? And said, well, we don't, we don't really know what health insurance is going to look like in two years, and I don't know if I can guarantee that. You know, if we want to start talking about paying those, those co-pays forever, um, that might be something they want to talk about.
Well, I don't think anybody can guarantee...
No, I...
Insurance is going to look like in two to three years. Okay.
And there's still a, I think, an underlying desire, um, by the, all the employees to get it, get the, the rate up to a higher, town's contribution rate up to a higher level. So...
We also have to have a sense of reality here, too.
I know, I'm...
All right, so that's still on the table?
Still on the table. Um, they, they are talking about coming, that, they were going to come to our meeting tonight, but they want the, they were waiting for some of their unions to get back to their, to the insurance advisory group. So they'd like to come to our next selectman's meeting to talk about that. County retirement now being the fifth highest budget, uh, is an increase of fifteen point and three-quarters. Fire and ambulance, one point four up to just over one point five, an increase of four percent. DPW operations, so when I say operations, I'm not including, um, street lighting, snow and ice, and the vehicle fuel, because those aren't really just DPW operations, so that's going from one point one to one point two, an increase of six point eight percent. And then municipal finance, uh, was the last one that I included on this list of the big, major components, a ten percent increase, and, uh, that was one of the things that Dave pointed out. Dave, Dave went through and, and gave me some good suggestions, uh, that we talked about just before this meeting. We've got, we've, we're funding, because we're losing our assistant account, town accountant, and our, uh, and our town accountant, both within a month of each other, to retirement over the winter. You know, I've got some funding in there to hire somebody probably in July, but I could, I could, I think with the plan I have, I could probably cut that back to, uh, hiring somebody like in October, so save, that, that number would become a little more reasonable. Uh, just another, oop, sorry.
Do you want to talk about a couple of these now, or you don't?
Well, let me just go to the next page, because it just, just, it's the same information, but instead of showing the percentage change, just shows you the, the impact on the, on the budget, um, by department. So the Norfolk Elementary is four hundred and fifty thousand, King Philip is five hundred thousand, uh, then you can see the rest going down to, so... Just those total one point seven million dollars of increases. So, sorry, I just wanted to get that up for you.
Uh, King Philip. The six point eight-four is their first one, right?
First one that they, yeah, the first one they gave to us, yep.
Last year, I think I was, we had five percent last year?
Five point...
Yeah.
I don't know. Thought that sheet was going to give me information. We went from seven point oh nine three to seven point three oh nine. It's three percent last year, we ended up with. That might be after we, remember that ninety-seven thousand that, that came and went? So I think that's after we took out the ninety-seven thousand.
So, let's assume that's going to come down.
Yeah.
It's five hundred thousand at, at six point eight, so that's roughly seventy grand per point, roughly, pretty close. So if that went down to five, you're talking about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty grand there. I know, I'm just, these are very arbitrary, no, you know, just, we know that the, the first shot is always the high shot. So if last year we were at three and change... I mean, just to, to take a look at where we might look, five percent certainly would be a good place to, to begin to have discussions. I'm not sure what the impact is on them, because I haven't seen those variables, they do do those variable sheets, I haven't seen them yet. I'm sure they got them.
Is that what's on the, uh, the thunder?
Yeah, so that'd be...
I did one, I did one at five and a half.
But their whole, their whole budget is on the thunder.
I estimated one at five, and if we were five and a half.
Okay, so that would be a hundred, that would be about a hundred grand, right?
Right, and the impact on their budget's about two ninety.
Okay. And they have not used all of their even money, so that's, that might, anyway, it's a place to look.
Yes.
So somewhere between a hundred to a hundred and fifty grand, somewhere in that range. And the health, of course, what, what would the difference be if you waited till October? Thirty grand on the government side, finance?
Probably closer to twenty, but...
Twenty. Health insurance, potentially, potentially somewhere between seventy-five and ninety, potentially.
Yeah, I'm not very optimistic there. I'm not very optimistic there.
But we gotta, we have to, we have to list potential sources and then work them through.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm... I have, will we, before you go solve this, you want me to just finish my presentation? I've got some other thoughts.
So you're going to solve it for me?
No, I'm not going to solve it, I'm not, or I, well, I, I could solve it, but it's not a very good solution.
Well, we can all solve it, but it'd be...
So the, if you just look at all expenses for town, yeah, it's gone from thirty-two point one up, as, as it stands today, thirty-four point two, an increase of just over two million dollars, so it leaves us a shortfall of five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So unknowns and solutions, and these are a little bit random, uh, or not, not prioritized. An unknown, the state aid, we still don't know what the House and the Senate, uh, is going to do. We expect the, the House budget any day now, uh, and then that will be followed by the Senate, then committee, uh, then approval. I suspect we won't have the final budget until close to July first. But I think we'll know, once the, once the House finishes and the Senate begins, I think we'll probably know that, uh, whether or not the governor's budget on local aid is good, which I, again, I suspect it's not that far off. Insurance negotiations are ongoing. Uh, as we talked about a couple times, the snow and ice, I don't know if we're going to get that money from FEMA. Again, that's, uh, FEMA is supposed to get back to the governor this, uh, in middle of April. Available free cash, we have up to four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in free cash, um, on top of the three hundred and fifty thousand that I, that I've used already.
That's prison mitigation, I think.
Yeah, then we'd have to, we'd have to negotiate that with the DOR, um, you know, if we allocate that towards using it for, to pay off our debt, um, it'll go, we'll have that same discussion we had five or six years ago.
Of course we could do.
Yeah. It's not a great solution, but it's... We do have funds in the ambulance fund, um, so we have a, we have a separate fund that we authorize every year at town meeting, that we take ambulance receipts in, they stay in that fund, subject to appropriation. At town meeting during the budget process, we have voted, the last couple of years, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of that. And we've gotten, most years we're, we're north of that, so we're in the three hundred to three hundred and ten thousand dollar range. So we've built up a little bit of a surplus. Again, we could either use it for buying an ambulance, or, or use it for, um, put towards the, the budget, if that source is available.
But we could lease.
Right, uh, and, and Cole mentioned that you guys had talked about that.
Because if, if we leased, and we did it, let's say, just the last quarter...
Yep.
You, you know, you're looking at about a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar payment, which would free up about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, still allow us to get the ambulance.
What would your, annual lease cost be, Jim?
The leases, the ambulance is between two and two fifteen, in that range.
Okay.
And the last lease payment we had was forty-some-odd thousand.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not much interest on it.
In that range, but, you know, the annual payment, so I'm figuring, you know, you get three months, five months, somewhere in that range, twenty, twenty-five grand on a cover of this fiscal years, or this upcoming fiscal year's lease payment.
Right.
Because he's going to need that before the next twelve months are...
Yeah, right.
So we need to leave, just my thought, I think we need to leave enough in there to cover that, that lease payment. Did you have a gut on lease versus buy? I mean, we've done both.
I, I think I'd rather lease at this point, just, uh, because interest rates are still low, so...
Yep, I agree.
Well, and each year, if we're really bringing in more than what we've been appropriating, we could actually probably fit the, the lease payment in, right, on that.
Very possible, yeah, so you could maybe get the one fifty free out.
Yeah.
So I just put all kind of what I thought of the good, the bad, and probably some of these are the ugly, on, uh, this one sheet at the end, just so you'd have one place to look at everything that, uh, we need to, we need to think about over... Get here closer to town meeting. Um, available free cash, we have, so the good is on the left. Available free cash, we have four hundred and ninety-two thousand. Again, that's in addition to the three hundred and fifty that I've already put into the budget. FEMA, hopefully we're going to get, I got question marks there, but hopefully we're going to get two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars back from them. Uh, that, my understanding is the payment for that probably won't be until after July first, so it's, so...
But we can carry that deficit, so...
We can carry that deficit, we just have to, we just have to resolve that deficit before we set the tax rate in November or December.
Yeah, so...
Additional ambulance receipts, as we just talked about, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available. Insurance negotiations, uh, you're right with your number, I, you know, I, I, some, the savings will be somewhere between seventy and one thirty. So that would, you know, assume, since it's, it's got the title negotiations, I figure we probably don't get all of it. The King Philip budget, we've, we've covered that, but that's, you know, I think we've got the worst-case scenario as far as the budget, uh, plugged in, into here. Budget cuts I've looked at, um, you know, if I just, if I took a, across-the-board cut of all the budgets, um, of one percent, I'd get two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and that includes the edu, that includes the education budgets, just...
But that, that's a big chunk of it, that takes, if you, if you take one percent...
Well, if general government, I get twenty-five thousand, public safety...
Schools.
What's that?
I was just talking about the schools, if you took one percent out of Norfolk Elementary schools.
If I took one percent out of, of, yeah, one percent out of Norfolk Elementary, that's, uh, a hundred and eight thousand.
Right, which is their all-day kindergarten program.
Alls I did was took one percent of all the budgets, and so I got general government, I got twenty-five thousand.
I know, I know.
Public safety, I got forty-five thousand. All of education, I got a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
And what was the total, well, inject the one percent, you said, the total, two ninety-six, you said?
Two eighty-one. Public works would be eleven thousand. Human services would be one thousand, and culture and recreation would be six thousand.
How much was it on, on, on police?
Uh, just police?
Yeah, just police.
Twenty-ish.
They're about two million.
Right.
Two million, okay.
Yeah, so like twenty-one, yeah.
There are two point three million, so...
Twenty-three thousand? You know, I, I, I always, uh... Cringe when we start talking about just doing a, you know, one percent across the board, because you got...
It's not all equal.
Yeah, it's not all equal, and you get things like the audit, you know, where, you know, it's not, there's not really a whole lot of...
Well, if you, if you, well, how about, what are the critical capital items?
Critical capital items are, so I have, uh, Chuck is simple, Chuck is, Chuck would like two police cars. Well, I'll give you all, and you can...
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna give it to you, no.
You're, you're giving us the wish list.
Yeah. It's, and it's not.
Well, I, I'm not saying it's an unneeded wish list.
I'll give you the list, and you can call whatever you want.
Call it whatever you want, okay.
Two police cars.
Started with critical, quickly swung to wish.
Why don't we all make it a ticket on the way home?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying come.
I'm a big capital in the fall guy myself, but that's a. All right, so two police cars, and those are the, in the forty to forty-five thousand.
Forty-five grand, yep.
Fully, fully loaded. At least they were last year. Fire department is, he's got two hundred thirty-five for the ambulance, but there, there is a.
Take ambulance out.
There's a trade-in component, so you're, the two fifteen number you had is good. Multi-gas detection equipment, so that's, they're gas. Detectors, three of them, at four thousand dollars, it'd be twelve thousand total. Cole has asked, it's a two thousand and six, so it's probably, probably actually a reasonable request at this point. Car one is, and I say that with a lot of love, Cole, in case you're listening.
The expedition?
Annual, the annual request.
A car, you said?
Yeah, car, sorry, it's car one, it's a she's car. So, that, that one's a two thousand and six. It, it is getting long-toothed. And then DPW, we don't have any really for town hall, but DPW has a fuel monitoring system, thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's the gas pumps, and that's a pretty high, even though we don't get a lot of goodness out of it, it's, it's important. It's lifespan. The high-band radio frequency, they need to upgrade sometime relatively soon, thirty-eight thousand. And then a request for H two, it's an F two fifty pickup to be replaced, forty-three thousand.
Each?
Just one, H two.
Oh, one, you said one, sorry, one pickup.
One, one pickup.
And it's forty-three K, forty-three K? And what was the radio frequency, your number?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, so both, they were both thirty-eight.
But Chuck needed, wasn't he at the base, didn't he need radios too? Where's the thing he needs?
Chuck would love portables.
The ones that were on the pallet, he said those are in bad shape, I thought.
Yeah, he, he has mentioned those to me before, but he, I.
No, he definitely did. I wasn't clear if he was funding those in the expense. I assume not, but, because it wasn't a huge amount. Okay, all right. It was like twelve, like, yeah, I agree, or something like that, yeah.
All right, so that's three hundred, is that it? So, that, that whole list is three hundred and sixteen.
DPW has a, has a long list, which I can.
But these are the critical.
Those are, those are the ones that are.
So, that's three sixteen.
So, would that fits, you know, if we don't spend that other capital money on the budget, that fits into that?
But it, if you did spend it, you've still got a hundred and seventy-six thousand you could apply to debt.
Yeah.
So. One seventy-six, one fifty. Six, twelve. I mean, if, if, just those three items, the ambulance, the one seventy-six to debt, and hypothetically, a hundred from, from KP, that's your four twenty-five. Of new, of new source, which cuts into five fifty-five, so you're, you're down to a hundred and thirty grand.
I'll sit here for a little while longer, you guys will solve my problem.
Well, the ambulance is, is an obvious one. I mean, you, I mean, you knew that, I mean, and we know KP's high, so there's gonna be something there. We don't know what, but there's gonna be something there. And, and I, I think your idea of applying a hundred and, even if we, even if we did all of these items, it still leaves you a hundred and seventy-six thousand of, of, that you could apply to debt, which, you know, comes off the credit card bill, which is the same thing as revenue. We're in rifle range.
Yeah. Say, say that again, just kind of summarize what you just.
Well, if you, a hundred and fifty from ambulance.
Yep.
Somewhere, I, I'm just saying a hundred from KP, you, you know, that's a point, what, about a point and a half? Yeah, about a point and a half off of KP. And then, and you've got a hundred and seventy-six of prison mitigation. Is it four fifty-two or four ninety-two? I forgot. I'm sorry, four fifty-three, my number's high.
So, where's that come from? See, the four oh three plus the eighty-nine.
Four thirteen, seven, three, a hundred and thirty-seven, sorry, a hundred and thirty-seven you could apply to debt.
He's taking the four fifty-three minus three hundred and ten thousand.
Minus the three sixteen, assuming you funded all of those projects you listed.
But we did spend fifty in the fall, so I think we're sitting, I think that was you, Jeff, you were, that's the number you're looking at, the four oh three.
Yeah.
So, we have four, okay.
Yeah, with four oh three.
And take it down some more.
We're down to.
Ninety, we're down to ninety. So, ninety, one fifty, two fifty. Three forty. So, we're down to two hundred and fifteen. And those are fairly obvious, I think, savings.
So, you do have, you do have that other ninety thousand dollars in the other, in the more traditional free cash.
And you've still got the fifty grand in there for the advisory board.
Right.
We didn't reduce that.
Right.
And you guys have offered some of that.
Very kindly, yeah, they did.
So, if.
Dave, Dave gave me a list of suggestions, which were, a lot of them we've talked about. But one of the things he talked about, which made sense, was lowering the advisory board reserve fund, if we don't lower other budgets, you know, critically. So, it's kind of a, a good one or the other solution. So, I'd be comfortable.
So, to twenty-five, is that?
Right.
So, you got twenty-five there.
I mean, that was the number we were historically at for a number of years, and I think it worked fine.
Eighty-seven towards debt, to be exact. You got one fifty in the ambulance, which we know we have. And somewhere probably between, I mean, it could be anywhere from seventy to a hundred and twenty on KP, so if you split the difference, instead of a hundred for doing it now. That's a three sixty-two. Without cutting any budgets. So, you're down to a hundred and ninety thousand, roughly, a hundred and ninety-three to be exact. And so, you've still got the potential on the table of the insurance, whether you're optimistic or not optimistic. The other ninety grand, Jack.
Well, I guess if, if you're gonna use the eighty-seven thousand from the capital free cash, why not just use the eighty-nine thousand instead of that? Unless you want to use both, but, you know, we gotta, we gotta also think about FY seventeen.
You could, yeah, either way, it doesn't, I mean, it's just one pocket versus the other. You're right, doesn't matter. I like the idea, I mean, I like the idea of applying, of applying it to debt, though.
That's fine.
Because it, it stays off the books, it's gone. I mean, reducing the debt is as good as revenue, but better, because you, you've got it every year thereafter, so.
Oh, I forgot some good news. Didn't I put it in there? Yeah, I put, I put it on the bottom of the sheet, the last thing on the bottom of the sheet. The elementary school has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, in FY fifteen budget money, that they are willing to turn back, that, that they have, they've told us that they will have to turn back to the town.
And you have just solved the budget.
Well, I didn't just solve the budget, we all solved the budget.
She, she told me she thought it was gonna be a hundred, but now, is it a hundred and fifty?
It's a hundred and fifty, I met with them.
Fantastic.
So. How I, how we move that from an FY fifteen budget to an FY sixteen budget is a little bit of a trick. That I, I'll have to, I'll have to talk to some other.
Technically, it would traditionally just fall through as free cash the following year.
It would be, it would be certified in October.
Oh, yeah.
So, if it's certified in October, and we had a fall town meeting in November, we could give them the hundred and fifty grand.
Yeah, we could, yep, we could, we could do that.
And that's right, that's totally clean.
That's totally clean.
Yep. So, we, there is a way to solve it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's that way. There's a few ways. That's one.
Well, but that, that's, that's a nice, easy, above-board, kind of, you know, I'm not suggesting anything's below-board, but I mean, that's, that's a clean way to do it.
And we could, we could use military funding and just spend the next year's budget at the end of this year's, and then reduce the budget.
Could do that too.
That would, that would be another way.
That'd be another way, yep.
To the extent, to the extent there's discernible spending that you can easily move between the periods.
It's just somehow.
Right.
More transparent to me.
Yes, yeah, because otherwise, the, the sixteen budget will be a hundred and fifty down, and then we'll be.
Exactly, exactly.
Then we'd be building up our numbers, so usually.
We're creating problems, and it's gonna skew the numbers the following year.
Right, right, no, I, I agree, so I'm not a, generally, I'm not a big fan of that approach, but.
So, one fifty school.
Just as an alternative too, we could
Eighty-seven.
short a different budget, like the debt budget, you know, we could short that, just, and then vote the the correct number for the elementary school in May, and then fix the debt budget in the fall by the hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that would work too.
Just, just so that there's no hard feelings about, you know, why are you shortening my budget?
Yeah, that, that could work too, yep.
Or employee benefits, I mean, you know, one of the.
Yeah, just, yeah, a simpler one.
One of the fixed cost. Yeah, I can go home now. Oh, forty-three thousand, wow, I'll find that.
So. Yeah, oh, yeah, the twenty-five from the advisory.
I think we're down to forty-three, and if we take twenty from municipal finance, it's down to twenty-three thousand.
Down near to twenty-three thousand, yep. That we can find, that we can find.
Well, Dave's list of suggestions, yeah.
And then, we don't have to touch any budgets.
No, we, we, we set ourselves up a little bit for FY seventeen by using four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of, of.
Well, if.
Oh, no, we won that, five hundred, almost six hundred thousand dollars, if you count the ambulance money of a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but that's recurring.
Not the one fifty.
Well, the one fifty was supplemental, that was over and above the three, three fifty or three seventy-five you take out anyway.
It's like a hundred.
We get about three ten, and we, we budget.
Three ten, sorry.
Two eighty, so there's about thirty that's recurring.
That's recurring, yeah.
So, one twenty, so the one twenty there, that's not recurring, and then the free cash of eighty-seven plus the three fifty, those are all, that's, that's, that's our hurdle for FY seventeen.
Unless you apply at least the eighty-seven to the debt, which I really would favor.
Well, yeah, but we still got the debt, we, that's, that's paying off the debt service, we still have debt service the following year.
Right, but it's lower.
It's lower, but not, not eighty-seven lower.
But it's lower.
It's lower.
You get some benefit from paying off the debt versus taking it out of free cash.
Same, we still have to come up with two.
Right, because it feels like the only minor, I'm sure there's some others, but the one that comes to mind, you know, we, we keep hearing the fifty-third week is causing some budget, so we'll get that saving next year, but it can't be that.
And the police, I think, will, this is a, this is a tough year for the police, because we're.
We got the full year of six-month officer.
We got some retirements.
And the retirements.
And, yeah, we got the full year on the, on the fire this year, so.
We have the full year in the planner, too.
But I, I still agree, it's at least probably a four hundred thousand hurdle we're gonna have to get over in seventeen.
But.
Maybe three hundred, three to four.
But, you know, you've got so many fixed wildcards in, between Norfolk County and state retirement.
Exactly.
Medical coverage.
Yeah, hopefully, medical will be better next year.
I mean, regardless, you know, once we figure out what we're doing this year, regardless, but generally, we don't get double digits back to back.
So, so what can we agree on tonight? We, can we agree on the twenty-five from the advisory board?
I can agree.
I know we can, well, I'm asking the advisory board, I mean.
Dave's pretty quick for that.
That's fine.
Can we, can we agree on the one fifty from the ambulance fund? Can we agree on applying eighty-seven thousand of prison mitigation to debt, assuming we fund all of those capital items?
The capital items that Jack mentioned, because there was.
Right, the ones he mentioned, which leaves us about eighty-seven thousand that we could apply to debt.
So, you, you had three hundred and sixteen thousand, so that's everything except the ambulance, is that what you were?
Did not include the ambulance.
And then we'll do a lease for the ambulance.
Do a lease for the ambulance. Dave's right, we can probably get that out of revenue.
Yeah. We get lower KP by a hundred thousand?
It might be more, but it, it's certainly gonna be in that range.
Twenty-five advisory board.
A hundred and fifty from the school.
All right. So, would you, I'll take it out of employee benefits, and then we'll, we'll, we'll fix employee benefits in the fall, or do you want me to take it out of school? Or debt?
I think I would take it out of employee benefits. And fix, and put the hundred and fifty back in on the fall meeting when it's certified. Because we've had, we've had some room in that anyway, over the years.
Yeah, it's getting tighter and tighter.
I know, it's getting tighter, but we, we, we've had a little latitude there.
Okay. So, that's.
So, what is that total?
I think those four or five twelve. And then I was gonna take twenty thousand dollars out of municipal finance. Oh, and then we might be able to get twenty-eight thousand dollars out of the overlay accounts.
Oh.
So, that would.
Oh, that's right, yeah, then you got it.
Overlay accounts are, so we, so if you look at the revenue sheet, we put hundred and fifty, hundred, ballpark of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, it's, it's a.
Yeah.
There's five sixty. So, we take a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and put it into a, an account for the Board of Assessors to use, so that when people come and, a couple of different reasons, but the main one is when people come and have a, challenge their tax assessment.
Okay.
So, then they, they use that money to abate their taxes. If they, if they agree with the, the people that are challenging them, they abate their taxes, and it comes out of that money. Other things that, that's used for are like the senior program, where seniors can come in and work for the municipality, and we actually pay them out of that money, but it, it really goes to reduce their, their taxes, their real estate taxes. Veterans exception, consumptions and other things.
Two forty-eight, that's one fifty, that's, that's five fifty-two.
So, we have a, we have it, by fiscal year, we have all these little accounts of overlay balances, and we have to keep
Find three grand.
money in there based on either uncollected taxes, or, because we may have to abate them at some point in the future, or for items that, for real estate taxes that have gone through the abatement process, but then, but the Board of Assessors decided not to abate the taxes.
Yeah.
But now they challenge us to land court, or the ATB.
So, it's like allowance for doubtful accounts.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
See?
Yeah.
This engineer's.
There we go.
Pay attention to school.
They don't get carried away now, or.
I'm looking to take your job.
Jeff, Jeff supplied for the town accountant job.
Congratulations. You have to thank Jim for it, though, too much to come out of retirement.
Well, thank you, that was a. I usually get you into a ballpark, and then we close it up at a meeting, and it works out. It's a good system we got.
Be a great lob that for us tomorrow.
Yep, yep.
All positive signs.
You better get us in a closer ballpark next year.
This is, this is, Jeff, this is an annual event.
I thought this was gonna be an easier budget, it was a little.
You might get a few more bucks out of state aid. I mean, it won't be a lot, but, you know, we might get twenty or thirty thousand dollars out of state aid.
And if we do that, I wouldn't mind putting some money in the advisory fund, just to, the reserve fund for, you know, if we blow a furnace in the middle of the year, or do something like that, it's a.
I would agree. I would agree.
It's nice to have.
You probably will get something more from state aid. They usually pop it up a little bit, twenty or thirty grand. I think it was thirty-three last year.
Representative Dooley will want some votes.
He won't. No.
Okay, we're good. Budget, we're good?
I think we're good. Thank you very much, once again. Dave, thank you very much for your...
It was all Dave's ideas, okay?
There was a lot of them. He had a lot.
He wrote the check.
KP dropped off some, just their budget presentation that they did for the advisory board. You may have three copies of it.
April, this one is February. Is that... I'm getting both of them to me. You can throw it out?
I only got one.
Oh, okay.
I have a mailbox upstairs.
I usually forget to check.
We'll show it to you when you...
Mary can give you a tour of the upstairs office.
Okay. Town Hill Memorial?
How do I say this? So NCTV is meeting tonight, but they have approached us, and I don't have all the details yet, but they just are... They are interested in... They're raising some money through their own members. And they may offer up the opportunities for others as well. They'd like to buy a memorial for Jack McFeely, a stone memorial, a seat. They don't want it... The little snag is they don't want... They want one... There are some stone ones out there, right by the tramp house. There's a stone bench. So I think that's... They've gone over to Swenson's or Svenson's, however you say it, and looked at some. So I've told them that, you know, pick out what you want. If you don't want to use what the Recreation Department picked out as kind of the standard for Town Hill that you guys already approved. If they want to do something different, it would need to just come to the selectmen to have you guys approve it and, you know, both the type and the location. But so they're interested in coming to that. I was hoping to have kind of some visuals for you to look at, but they haven't given them to me yet of what they're looking at. But she said it's supposed to be like... She said there's two benches over there, stone benches, right in the, I think, in the gardens to the left of the tramp house. So they're looking at that. And they want to have it somewhere near the clock that...
Jack's clock.
Jack's clock. So I'll have that for you and...
I think it's a wonderful thing to do, but I just have one question. With the request from Recreation earlier and with this request, we don't have any policy that I'm aware of as to how we do something like this. And, you know, I'm thinking of... I mean, Jack's not the only selectman we've lost. I always get uncomfortable when we start picking and choosing.
Yeah, Mary and I talk about this a lot.
I mean, I'm not saying that this isn't a good thing, but we have a lot of people that do a lot of good things for Norfolk. And, you know, we've had two selectmen that I can remember that have passed away in the last couple of years that served multiple terms. We should give some thought to how we create some sort of standard for this, because you're not going to get eighty-five benches on Town Hill.
Yeah.
So, you know, just... I don't know the answer, but I do think it's a legitimate question that we...
Yeah, I do, too.
All of a sudden, we're starting to get these issues. And we're all getting older. You know, I mean, we should have some kind of guidelines that apply across the board to everybody so that we are fair in how we say thank you to people. I don't know if I'm wording this correctly.
No, you know, I mean, it's definitely... We've talked about that and it's... And I guess my only... My two cents on it are is just with each passing, if you will, each individual. It's so, you know, sometimes it's... Each one is unique, so I'm not sure... I'm not sure you can write a policy for that. I mean, you know, there's momentum here because Jack was relatively young and Jack was still engaged with NCTV.
I understand.
And all that. And, you know, I...
But let me give you another example, though. I mean, look what just happened with a resident of the town in their forties. Who was incredibly active in Recreation, coaching, and had been doing it for years.
And that's right. And if the group came together and said, you know, we'd like to donate a, you know, a ball, a backstop or whatever.
They are going to do some things, you know, to create some memory, you know. But when you... I'm just talking about Town Hill, Jack. You know, when it comes to Town Hill, you have limited capacity to do that. And I think doing this for Jack's the right thing. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just looking beyond it and saying, how do we just maybe give some thought? And I know it's tough. I mean, maybe it is... Maybe there's no answer and we just have to deal with each one individually.
Do we know... Are the towns have any energy? It doesn't mean, you know, policies in regards to that, too, because like you said, each time I rent them, Frank and I go through the same issues, too. I don't know. To Jim's point, I don't know there's any...
I mean, there are a lot of different ways you can recognize people. I mean, you know, someone associated with the school, you can name the library after them or, you know, things of that nature. So there are a lot of very appropriate, nice ways to say thank you to folks that, you know, have served the town over the years.
Maybe that's the answer, Jim, if you try to keep it approximate to where the person is...
Town Hill's neutral. I'm only thinking, yeah.
It is, but it's also, I mean, it's almost an extension here of Town Hall.
Yeah.
So, I mean, your example of Recreation, try to do something consistent with Recreation environment.
Ball fields or, you know, things like...
Maybe.
Uniforms. I mean, a lot of ways that they can do that.
Look at... I mean, I definitely see, agree with you.
Yeah, this isn't a... It's just popped in my head when you raised this. I just...
But it's a good... I looked... I kind of came to the conclusion when I was thinking about it with Mary, because Mary is very good at kind of grounding me with... When I go off on something.
Thank God.
Yeah, no kidding. There's a whole team of people that work on that. But I just kind of came to the conclusion, well, it's a good problem to have, you know.
Yeah.
I mean...
People still will raise questions, because there was questions when they were doing the... Am is doing the benches for the rec, right? Who gets them? How do we get them, you know?
It would be one thing if we were spending town money on these things, but we're talking about, you know, somebody coming to us with insane... We want to remember somebody because X was important to this part of the town and we want to give the town something.
And that's a great thing, but it's still on Town Hill.
Fast forward twenty years and now when it's completely kind of full, we don't want to be overgrowing benches. What do you say? You know, and he... No, but you know what I mean? I mean, that's what I think Jim is trying to get at. It's going to come to putting maybe not us three or any of us in this room.
You said it much better than I could.
You know what I mean? There's going to be no room.
I know what you mean. I think we've got about fourteen more benches we could buy.
We're good. Let somebody else solve it.
And I'm okay with that. You know, this is such a...
The engineer has come through. He's got the answer. Let somebody else solve it.
I don't want to answer this. This one, I'm okay.
Oh, I'm okay with it, too. It's an interesting question. That's all.
So we defer, then? Okay.
I mean, if... Yeah. Why don't we defer and I'll just shut up?
Before for now.
I mean, Fred... How long? How many... Marion, how many terms did Fred Fishner serve? Two, three?
Uh, two, I think.
Two, okay. You know, and then we didn't do anything there.
Andy was one of the boards. And there's some that aren't just selectmen.
No, I know. I know.
They're not on the board, so...
But they're uncommon.
I don't know.
If they're uncommon, like Jack said, they kind of came to us, so if someone was...
We'll leave it to someone else to solve twenty years from now.
I mean, the selectmen might want to have a policy for... Well...
No, don't go there.
Yeah, well, we'll go there.
We'll leave it to... Put the advisory board figure it out.
Yeah. Dave already gave us twenty-five thousand. He can solve his own problems. He's a good problem. He can solve all our problems.
You got twenty-five grand. You can buy all the benches we need. I think it'd be wonderful to do for Jack. I mean, that was such a sudden and unfortunate thing.
It was a fixture, for sure.
I heard a story from Pam Russell, who's the NCTV chair, who, you know, they asked Jackie what she would like. And Jackie said that Jack brought... Whenever he had guests in town, he brought them down to the clock.
The clock, yeah.
He was very proud of that clock.
I remember the day it got turned on. You remember?
I don't remember the day. I don't remember that day. I remember Jack loved that clock.
We took pictures. Don't you remember? Jack came down and you were there. Yeah. We took... Oh, it's like we just launched a, you know, a major warship or something.
I took a tour of where they built it over in Medfield.
Isn't it? Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, well, I think that's wonderful that they're going to do something for Jack. And we'll let the selectmen of two thousand and thirty solve the bench problem.
So noted. Thank you.
Duly noted. Sorry I brought it up.
No, no, no. I mean, I'm sure it's going to come up.
I just... Fairness thing always kind of runs through me.
Anything else, Jack?
We do have executive session?
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
No. So Bob and Bob and...
Well, I have something.
Yeah, I've been working a lot on the water resources.
Yeah, I haven't seen that before. Okay.
So he kind of... Kind of typical Bob and my conversation goes left, right, left, right. He talked about wanting to do a transfer and for some to be determined out of retained earnings at the May Town Meeting to do some more well explorations, do some testing. And so I said, that's fine. And he said, so can you get the selectmen to talk about that? I said, yeah, that's great, but first we should have... We come in and talk about the results of that, you know, go over that.
Haven't seen that, right?
Yeah, so we're going to do that at the next selectmen's meeting.
And roads. When are we going to meet on that?
He's ready to go. If you want to... If you either want to meet, we can talk about that on the... I can't see that far anymore, the twenty-ninth. We can talk about it on the twenty-ninth or we can... I think he's got some Chapter Ninety stuff that he's ready for you guys to sign. I know he's definitely got some plans. Why don't I forward you some stuff that he's... He sent me yesterday and then he told me today he wants to just update it a little bit.
Is some of it urgent?
Something that could be urgent. We could talk about it Wednesday if we have to.
I went to his staff meeting Friday morning and he went through all the road issues with the guys and their plans. And of course, they're delayed getting on the ball fields and all that kind of stuff. It sounded like he wanted... That's why I thought maybe he was going to be on tonight's agenda when I sent you the note, because he sounded like he had sense of urgency on some of this stuff.
Yeah, and he really wants to start getting to work on... He went around with Agregit the other day and looked at some of the roads. And so he's trying to put together a calendar with them. They're the ones that would actually do the, you know, majority of the work. I know Union Street has... Union Street has begun to come the two thousand and fifteen version of Park Street. It just seems to be falling apart as we... As the days go by. So I know that's high on his list of things that he wants to get an attack on.
I was just thinking, where we're posted for Wednesday night, if you emailed each of us individually his urgent list, if you will, we could email you back. And even if it's just two of us, we could vote it, as long as you've got the information from all three of us. We could... Would that do it?
Yeah, no, he just needs... Yeah, that'll...
For the shortlist. And then we'll have the meeting to go through the big list.
That's fine.
Well, is that...
That's fine. Welcome to my...
No, I mean, I just... I went to his meeting and I know he had some urgent roads that he wanted to get to.
Yeah, he's got some, yeah. And he's got some queued up from money he's already been given, so...
Oh, okay.
You know, because...
Well, if we don't need to do it, it can wait.
Other than Lake Street, but he's got some work on Main Street that he's already got funding for.
Anything new on that?
No. Oh, no. But I did get some bad news just before the town meeting. There was another house on town property.
Oh, I heard. Yeah, I heard that.
You know, we have a house. Yeah, there's another one now.
We're doing well in acquiring land.
Well, yeah.
By getting houses built for us, right? Another four of a house. I look at that one. It's another four of a house. It's being built for us, yeah.
Same engineering firm.
No way.
Same time period.
Are you serious?
It's incredible. We're not anywhere closer than the other one, are we?
No. No, but the legislators are talking to each other about... Because Jeff Roy was down in Milton area, had some ideas on how to... Some legislation that they could work on with... So he's going to work on that with Richard and Sean.
So is title insurance any relief?
Doesn't seem... You know, we've put that burden on the property owner and the feedback we got was, no, it's not. They rely on... I think it has to be a lawsuit against the engineer.
I was going to say, isn't the engineering firm liable for putting a house on the wrong piece of property?
The title firm is... We know how valuable those engineer stamps are.
And this is the same firm?
Uh, yes, it is. Landmark engineer. We understand one of the partners is very sick.
Yeah, but this happened a while ago, anyways.
This happened back in the nineties, Jack.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not saying the... Yeah, no, I'm just saying as far as resolving it, it's not easy to resolve with a principal who's not doing well.
Wow.
What do you have for us?
And I remember Town Council saying when we first brought that first one that they'd never seen that before.
Yeah, we got two.
And now we got two.
We'd be an expert. We could be relied upon as an expert.
They should...
Good news is he can't give us that same answer, because he's seen it before. And then we'd be relied upon as experts.
I'm sure it's happened other places. It will happen.
Don't you think we should get a refund for, you know, helping them explore new and exciting opportunities?
Yeah, at least a rebate on a bill.
Do you have something, too, for us to share?
Well, I was going to just update you on Southwood.
Okay, great. Yeah.
We met, as you know, today. Caused you guys to... Caused us to be a little late here. We've been meeting with George now for close to a year. Certainly about nine months, anyway, close to that. I think we've had four or five face-to-face meetings. And he's made a ton of progress in terms of where we are. He's done detailed financial analysis, but I wanted to... This is where he is with the project. This is the zoning. For those at home, we have had established a zoning working committee to work with this gentleman who is proposing a rather extensive project on the old Southwood Hospital campus. We've been meeting with him. There's about eight, I don't know, seven or eight of us on this working committee. And we've probably had eight, ten meetings, maybe more, for a better part of nine to ten months, working through the issues. The project right now, what we're working towards is an agreement, and I have a draft of it that I'll give to Jack that he can send out to you. Working towards an agreement, we're intending on having him come to a May selectmen's meeting to present what this working committee has worked through with him. Followed up by a presentation. We're going to do a cable show as well as a presentation at the middle school for all citizens, hopefully, that have interest in taking a look at this. And the idea is that this would be done as an overlay district with very specific phasing in of the four components. The four components are two hundred and...
One twenty.
Twenty. Your numbers are in the bottom. Two hundred and twenty townhouses.
Seventy-five.
Well, that number's wrong. It's a hundred and fifty upper-end A-class apartments. Then you've got... The assisted living component may vary, but it's going to be somewhere between seventy and a hundred and thirty units, depending on how the different groupings fall. And then a smaller component of commercial, which, no, it's thirty-two thousand square feet, that will kind of fall after the fact. And the plan would be that first, all of the two hundred and forty, two hundred and twenty condos would all be restricted age, all restricted age. This was a major deal, so that the impact of the schools is really minimal. The apartments are all one- and two-bedroom apartments, so you have, obviously, just by design, limited the number of potential children there as well. We've... He's done a detailed financial analysis based on our current budget, the town's two thousand and fifteen budget and potential revenues and costs. He's got some fine tuning to do, especially on fire. With that many restricted age units, we figured ambulance runs would be on the increase, not on the decrease.
Substation right there. We're just putting ambulance right there.
Well, actually, one of the members of the committee proposed a substation down there. And I will admit that my gut reaction to that was not favorable for a couple of reasons. One, the staffing. This is the main concern. Is that, you know, you're going to get into more people in staffing that. Southwood is four blocks past this prison. I mean, it's a, what?
It's not really that far.
Two-minute drive from where we're... I mean, it's not that we're not centrally located to get there. We probably need another ambulance, which would be part town water, sewage. All of those things are part of the, you know, on the table in agreements. And there's willingness on his part to help us resolve all of those issues, either through funding or other sources. He's going to have to do a series treatment plan. MWR has said absolutely no way they're going to allow him to hook up. So he's going to have to do a treatment plan.
That was via wall pole, right?
Right. It would be wall pole. It's off the table. There's no willingness to even discuss it. Couldn't even get a meeting. So he's going to have to do a treatment plan. We know water's an issue, but with the hookup, we talked with Bob McGee about this extensively. He has expressed a willingness to help us in the funding of a new well source. a new well source, um, and Milis allows us some of the opportunity. This, this isn't gonna even begin until 2018, and it's probably a five to six-year process for this all to get completed, so there's plenty, if we can find the source, there's plenty of time to develop the source and permit the source. It's been, it, it's been, I think, um, there's some things about this project that make it very, very interesting. Uh, one, it's, it's a site that, it's, we're lucky to find anybody that even has interest in developing it, because there, there are two brownfields located on this site, it's owned by the Arch Diocese, they're not gonna sell it to anybody that is going to have a complete, doesn't have the complete capability of cleaning this up, so that they don't have any extended liability, you know that's gonna happen. He's one of the few developers that has experience in brownfield cleanups, as, as I think you all know. So just to have someone that's interested in a piece of property that we frankly never thought we'd find anybody interested in it is something really good. The financials are actually very, very attractive. Uh, the revenues are substantial. Yeah, a lot. Now, it comes in over a period of time, but, but once build-out is completed, which should probably be between five and seven years, um, you are talking about a, a positive, substantially positive flow to this development in terms of anticipated expenses, and he's looked at both schools, fire, police, um, not much to DPW and things of that nature. It's also set aside, you know, it's on 1A. Now, he, he's gotta deal with the state in terms of access on and off, because that's a state highway, uh, then he's gotta go to your board, obviously, for a whole bunch of things, but it, it's been a productive process, and I think we've got pretty much agreement, uh, at least with the working committee, which is a non-binding group, um, to go forward with bringing something to Town Meeting, which would be in September, that's sort of the tentative plan. Um, and, and one member, Mr. Weddleton, to his credit, has been insistent from day one that this be an overlay project, um, and, um, that has made a huge difference, I think. Overlay meanings, and I know you know this, Jeff, but just for those at home, and you probably do too, but it, it just means that, that you're not gonna get all of Phase 1 without components of Phase 2, Phase 3, so to speak, uh, you know, which is what's happening down here. You've got a commercial site going up and, you know, that should've been up three or four years ago, that was supposed to be up three or four years ago, and now you're just looking at a couple of pieces of steel. And how many months has that been sitting there? You know, four or five months or something like that. Uh, an overlay project means that it, there are very specific phase-ins to each of these four components, with the possible exception of commercial, because that's a small component and, you know, it's gotta see what the demand is, and I think we're all in agreement that that one is enough concern, but the assisted living would provide a great, uh, relief to us in terms of, um, our affordable home requirement, because there are ways that a, a certain percentage of those can be counted, uh, so we'll not only get the benefit of the revenue, we'll get the benefit of a pretty good number of units towards our 10%. Uh, he's been pretty good to work with, uh, he's been very responsive to all of the issues, um, and, uh, the committee's been very good, and, um, and I think, not to single out one member, because I think all the committees have done a good job, and I think to John's point, to pursue this from day one as an overlay project, uh, was a very